Whatever it is you're imagining.
Well, that's what I'm hoping this plan does.
Versus capital, like Lisa asked you the question about putting towards specifically the capital expenditures.
Well, let's go there then. I mean, depending on what the superintendent told me before, depending on who funds the plan and who retains the control over the money, I believe that the plan should be funded to the school and the school controls it. Because who knows better the repairs of the school district than the school? I couldn't tell you what they are. I can only tell you that I read a, you know, seventy-five-page book and I know what they tell me it is. That doesn't do anything with it. So I can't, I don't really necessarily know the answer to that.
No, I appreciate that, but I think that when the town funds something for capital expenditures, it's different than, it doesn't contribute to maintenance of efforts. I just wondered why you were doing that.
Well, that's because I believe that if we change our oil now, we're not gonna have to fix our regener.
He wants it to continue to fund us every year so that we can continually fund it.
Every year it's a funding.
Fixing the facilities.
Well, your hope would be that the school committee would agree to spend the money in that way.
The right way. Well, if we all came to a plan and you didn't, I don't think the plan would work.
And one of the ways you could lock that in a little tighter is through Rye's suggestion of revolving account.
Well, that's the next line I read.
Yeah, so if you set up that revolving account, that would, that earmarks that money.
Who set it up, though? That's the answer that I think we need to know. Who set up that fund, though? If the town sets it up, I believe we were taking control.
So the town can't set it up. Based on the conversation we've had with Rye so far, the school committee has to request that the town council authorize the school committee to set it up. Once you set it up and you have that authorization from the town council on file, you can then get direct reimbursement from Rye. Without that authorization from the town council, the school committee cannot get direct reimbursement.
My hope is you get the authorization.
Right.
Right, so at the same time, you can't use the money for anything but.
No, the money, the money in that revolving account would only be for capital.
For projects. Well, that's the whole intent of the plan.
And that's the bulk of what you're suggesting, anyway, so yeah.
We'd like thirty percent reimbursement, so that's on the scheme.
Thirty-five percent. Yeah, but it would ultimately be funded.
Yeah, I think that we could also vote to put it in a restricted account. I mean, I agree with that concept, but if there was other money that the town council wanted to give us, we could put it in a restricted account based on Hallowell. Say, listen, so it would be in a restricted account for the sole purpose of capital improvements, as long as we voted that.
Right, the nice thing about putting it in the Rye revolving account is we get thirty-four percent reimbursement.
I agree with you, but if it were non-reimbursable and the council wanted assurances, I think that we could vote to put it in some type of account like that.
Yeah, that's another thought.
Yeah, we could have them, remember, standing or an agreement or something like that.
So we all sign, and they sign, too?
Does it bind future school committees if we agree to it?
It does, it puts them in the fund.
Just the fund, yeah. We can't bind another district as to what they'll spend out of their own appropriation, but certainly if we set up all these funds, we could put conditions on it, and I think we can, yeah.
And it would be binding to the future.
Yeah, I think we can, sure.
I just had a quick question for Jason, but I want to make a comment. I appreciate the fact that you, you know, I know what it's like to come out with a plan and have people, you know, without, you know, but that's what we do, right? So I appreciate, I appreciate, you know, the courage because, you know, it's just the absence of fear because you're trying to do the right thing. So I give you that credit. The two-hundred thousand dollars that you're talking about increasing the AM all week, so several different ways to get at it. We heard a possible capital reserve fund, we heard the other option, which is the more obvious is why not just allocate it through your, the town capital fund, which is, I'm a little lost on because I know this particular year, the school department took a heavy decrease on the town side from the capital funds, while the capital funds increased dramatically to the town. So we actually took a heavy reduction, so we weren't able to do a lot of the things we proposed. So are you suggesting maybe there actually be a permanent, a dependable amount every year?
That's kind of what this plan suggests.
But you don't want to do it through the town capital, is that it?
Well, my intent is to leave the authority with the people that know best. Who knows that the schools, I will just make something up. Who knows that the ceiling tiles are gonna fall on kids' heads? The administration does, the school does. Why would necessarily the town be in control of repairing those tiles falling on kids' heads when we're not the entity that manages that?
Yeah, no, I don't doubt it. I just, my two cents is it's better to do under a capital reserve account if the school committee gets authorized. If you're gonna kick in your own money, then actually the only way you wanna do it is to do it in a capital reserve account where the town council signs off so that the reimbursement comes back to you and it's replenishing your capital reserve account.
That's the whole.
If you do it the other way, you kick in whatever surplus you have, you'll never see that again because the reimbursement goes to the town. So my way, my two cents is either through the town capital or capital reserve. If you get the two-hundred thousand in your operating budget, what's to say you don't need it to pay for things that, I mean, we submitted a budget in November. When we get to May or June, PPS director could say, we had a problem here, and so it could cost you another two-hundred million. So I think if you're trying to protect it, I think what you talked about over here makes sense.
We got your four-fifty reserve that we put away. We got your four-fifty that we put away.
There you go.
If, hold on a second, let me.
Could I just add to, I don't want to miss the point that you made about if we spend it from the reserve account, then we lose it completely?
No, no, if you, if you kick in money into a capital reserve account that's under the town, normally it would be under the town's auspices. The town would set up a capital reserve, but there are other communities that town council has signed off on the school department setting it up using their funds or collaborating. Town chips in, let's say, half a million, school department chips in a half a million, but then the reimbursement comes back to the fund controlled by the school committee and instead of spending one million dollars, or help me out, you end up spending one point six because of the reimbursement coming back every year.
But that's only through the revolving.
I'm sorry.
We wouldn't lose control over it.
No, no.
But that's only through the revolving fund, right?
The capital reserve account.
Yes, sorry.
It would be crazy not to use revolving.
I know, I'm trying to stick to the words that Roger.
Okay, I got it, alright. Let me just, let me just agree then is if there's a better way to do it, a model can be changed. I mean, if there's a better way to retain whatever you need to for that aspect of this, change it, do it.
Yeah, and Jason, you know, I mean, you know this better than I do. You're the math guy, so if you're, if you're, if you're getting, instead of the traditional way of getting reimbursement from Rye is that the project is done under whatever funds you use for. The project is set out, approved by Rye, you complete the project, it's submitted for reimbursement, and at the end of the project, they give you that thirty-five percent.
Comes back to us to pay off the funding source of the.
Comes back to the town to pay off whatever funding source.
However you pay for it, correct?
So the difference with this revolving, capital reserve, whatever you want to call it, is that with the town council's authorization, it comes back in. The big benefit is, and I don't know what this works out to, Steve, you said it, but I'm not sure of the actual number. If you're getting that thirty-five percent, but instead of waiting till the end of the project, you're getting it monthly now.
You can roll the back.
You're rolling, you're taking that cash in and you're, and that's part of your next outflow for the next time. It extends the life of that, that spend.
Just health and safety.
It's just health and safety.
Well, I actually, I really.
But a lot of the things on the capital.
The state reimbursement here, because I only base the state reimbursement on town and school monies on hand. Actual health and safety for the project at thirty-four percent is much, much more than the six-hundred thousand.
Because most of the things in the capital plan are health.
That's correct.
Could conceivably be put under health and safety.
Correct, so if you have five million in that, reimbursement is one point five million, not the six hundred I have here.
And if I could just add one thing, just to tie it in. This was, I mean, you and I read the seminar, I think Paul, you were there, Steve, you were there. I was sitting next to John Flaherty, we were at a seminar a few years ago with Rye, and Joe DeSilva was there, I remember, and Joe DeSilva was saying, Joe DeSilva being, you know, the chief, the person in charge of this at Rye, saying, these are the new, he wasn't saying do it, but he was kind of, I thought he felt he was encouraging districts to look into this kind of funding. And if I recall, there's a district in the East Bay, and I think, yeah, who is it? They're financing major renovations, and there was an article like in, it was in two thousand twelve or two thousand fourteen, because tech was bonding, you know, different schools were bonding. I'll maybe find out which district it is. There's one of the districts down in the East Bay, I think it's Plowworth or Tivenin, but they're doing all the renovations through the revolving fund. They said they're not doing it to any, they're not doing it, they're spreading it out, but they're not doing anything to bond it. And like all the other districts, they would, it was a multi-million dollar project. Everyone in the paper asking, how are you doing it? And they said, we're doing it through, you know, we're using the revolving fund. And I don't know which district it was, but.
I think it was Bristol Warren, actually. I'll check.
You know, find out how it was working for them, because.
It's working well.
Yeah.
We have articles about it.
See, we're working it.
You're getting free money versus paying interest on your money.
Right.
Incredible concept. That's exactly what this plan does, is to try to maximize the state's free money. If you can put up a million, and I can put up a million, and the state will put up a million, and we only have four million of projects, well, what does that mean? That means the bond is only a million, it's not four point three. And if those projects are thirty million, you can put up a million, I can put up a million, the state puts up a million, twenty-seven million, we can't do it. You see what I mean? This creates the model of can we do this, can we not do this? How are we gonna fund it? Who's gonna kick in money? And really, isn't it everybody in the community? Because ultimately, the taxpayers are the ones that are gonna pay for this. This is why I agreed or put a component of annual funding to the school in here. Because, say I fund this and all the projects are done, and that funding goes away because we're no longer funding a Rye reimbursable fund. What happens then? You're no longer changing your oil again, you're waiting for your engine to die. This should be perpetual, it should always be there. It should be a revolving thing, whoever retains control over it. It should be there to make sure that the schools, in my simple terms, don't collapse on kids' heads. I mean, that's really the point behind this is what do we need to do? We need to do everything, don't we? How do we do everything if we argue whether it should be a bond or should be a health and safety or should be a reconfiguration? I mean, things just aren't getting done. Being on high horses out there, we need to come together where everybody puts their effort into something as a result, result-based. I think the town would be willing to fund it. I'm not sure at all how you guys would feel about this plan yet. Actually, initially, I thought you'd hate it because it came from the town. Hopefully, I'll be honest, though. I mean, how often does the town really look out for the school committee? How often? Does it happen a lot?
Jason, are you?
We'll come back.
We should be starting to work together, though, is the point. Go ahead.
No, I agree. So, and I can say honestly, you and I have worked together a little bit through the PBIC and dealing with each other, you know, just on day-to-day issues. And I've had no issues at all. I think you're doing a great job. So I guess my question would be, I know we have, and I don't think we've talked about this at PBIC, but we're implementing the town bond as well. This model for addressing, you know, like you say, changing the oil, should be going on at the town level, and I don't think that's happened in the past either. I would just suggest that you take that same fervor and speech and go to the town council, just with the town things, because, you know, there's a reason that, you know, the town hall and Kendall Dean are in the state it's in.
We all have the same problem. A lack of facility and capital funding for years. The town and the school have the same problem?
Yeah.
Local funding for three years, seven health.
I can't answer that question. If that's what your administration feels, then that's what they feel. I'm not here to discuss operations, I'm here to discuss capital.
If I may, would it make sense to then request to put this on at that joint meeting, the March tenth joint meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
I think that's the whole point of the meeting.
And then Jason can make his presentation like that, and we can.
Works for me.
I think that's the whole point of the meeting, is you see how amenable everybody in the same room is to a plan like this?
Are you planning to go over this presentation with the joint meeting in the same way that you've done with just us?
Absolutely. If that's, if that is what is going to have people understand the concept the best, again, the concept is a moving target. All of this could change. Somebody could come back and say, hey, you need to spend fifty million dollars. Well, let's start over, Model D, we'll call it. You know what I mean? So anything that happens is gonna change this model. The model is the concept of coming together. You kick a little, town kicks a little, state kicks a little. We get what we need done because we're working together. I mean, and again, if it's, if that's not amenable to people because people just can't agree with, you know, the town can't agree with the school or the school can't agree with the town, I wasted four hours, oh, well, no big deal. Well, I mean, it doesn't fall into fear, though, because ultimately, everybody agrees that it needs to be funded. You know.
I thought we had a really good discussion over it.
Yeah, we did.
We stopped short of revising the plan because I didn't have that direction from the school committee, so we didn't want to do that, so.
Jason?
Sure. I want to thank you for making this presentation. This is great. I know it's not an easy subject and not the most popular thing to talk about. But again, I want to thank you, and I concur with the majority of your comments.
The concept, right?
The concept and your comments, so I know, I know I would be on board with something like this, and I want to thank you for bringing to our attention. It's really appreciated.
I think the same angle is gonna have to be had with the council to understand that. The change in the oil versus the replacing the engine. I believe they understand that concept. Have they seen it in action with the school? Maybe not, but I think that they will, maybe this will be it.
Jason, just a thought. Let's say that we are in agreement, and when I mean we, let's say that all the stakeholders are in agreement. Just from your, just from your thinking, Donald, are there any, what are the professionals? I don't mean individuals, but like, any other fields we need to bring in? I mean, do we have everything, we just implement this, or what else, do you see, what else we need to bring this in?
Well, I mean, the biggest discussion that I've had is the unknown of, and again, John and I talked about this earlier, experts to know that these items that are identified is how it needs to play out. So I'll just give you an example, just make something up. The ceiling tiles are gonna collapse. An engineer says you can do it for two-hundred thousand, we say three-fifty. Wouldn't you want to vet that through the engine? You know what I mean? That's the only angle here, is the collaboration of everybody who knows to come up with what the real answer should be. I couldn't tell you any of the answers. I don't know what really needs to be done in the school. I don't walk them daily like everybody else does. I know these things need to be done, because it's easy to see that. They haven't been funded for years. Now, I've only been here one year. So if in one year I can see that it hasn't happened, imagine how it's been prior to me. And imagine how we'd be moving forward if we never put anything in place to try to work together to do it. You guys could be here three years from now saying, Hallowell's gonna collapse, what are we gonna do? Well, that's okay.
Just so you know, the only thing that doesn't happen here is Hallowell. So basically leaving the building, basically saying we'll sell it to somebody that way.
Well, that's one concept that's been discussed.
That's what he had, yes, he's not decomposing, he's not tearing it down. He's just basically saying we'll sell it, lock, stock, and barrel.
So Jason, would you please assume that these would be the only capital requests from the school to the town? Would this be all encompassing or just maintenance?
No, this is only facility repair, you know what I mean, plan. This has nothing to do with if you request to planning for under fifty thousand for desks through the capital process of the town, totally separate from this plan. This is almost like a, we'll call it a SBC slash PBIC-type administrative plan, where the stakeholders are the entities that know what needs to be fixed. That doesn't mean the town should have nobody at the table, though. You know, ultimately, if they're gonna be funding this, somebody should be there. The analogy I used in the meeting we had was if somebody's not there on the town side and the school decides, well, instead of doing a bathroom for a million, we want a million worth of gold toilet seats, and nobody's there to say that's not what should be done, and that's what gets done? That's the concept of having an SBC or PBIC as the controlling entity of who decides what really needs to be done. I mean, I believe that starts with the administration, starts with facilities. It goes through a full capital planning process, it goes through identification, but the control should be with the entity who knows.
Should we have a line at some point, Jason, for that Hallowell piece of land or property that we're gonna get some funding at some point?
Do you mean as far as seventy-five?
Let's say you sold it for a million dollars, can that be a source of funds to the town at some point? A one-time source? I don't see it anywhere, we don't know what it's worth.
Without even knowing that that's gonna happen, that's a hard one to say. Well, at that point in time, you'd project for the next year that, yes, we're planning on selling this, the market value is X, we should split the proceeds. Should it go directly back to the school? I don't know, that's not.
Yeah, I don't know who actually has legal rights to that.
That's an answer I can't tell you, I have no idea.
Yeah, we have to give it up, I know.
Yeah, so that answer would be beyond me tonight.
Yeah, to be, to be clear, the bond does not address the disposal of Hallowell in any way, shape, or form. It addresses the fact that we are looking for regalia here and that a line item was included for the destruction of Hallowell. It does not, and in fact, there'd still be two buildings there that the school would retain possession of, so. That's, I don't want to take people down the wrong road, though. Think that that's on the table for discussion, that's a three-year-away discussion.
Another factor though is Model A changes. We need to raise Hallowell, too, add that to the model. See, this is why it's such a moving target here. How it plays out is gonna be the answer to this. What Nestdeck's, you know, answers are might be the answer to this. It might not be. The answer might be, well, you need to do, you need to build. It's gonna cost you twenty million. The voters didn't approve that, how are we gonna do this? Now we have to step back to the drawing board.
Yeah, if something like, if something like that, that means we have to go back for it. We can't proceed with what we have on the table.
That's kind of, that could play out that way, too. Nobody really knows. So I'm just kind of making models of, hey, if this happened, this might have cost, you know, if this happened, this could be what the cost is, and this is how we could pay for it.
Did you have a question, Steve?
Yeah, thanks, Mary. I would echo what you've all said, it's a good construct, it's a good structure. I'd like you to kind of jump in here, too. I think from my end of it, I'm looking at the granular, the grunt work, and one of the things we've heard over and over again from Rye that I think, we can have the joint meeting, you can talk about the moving parts. The most important thing we need to do is wrap up our capital plan, get votes on it, and get it to Department of Ed. That's the foundation, that's the only foundation that allows you eventually, when you get your planning, to do what? If that's not there and approved, all of this is for naught. And so it's one of the things I've been saying over and over again. I think it really is important, we get whatever votes we need to finish that and get it to Department of Ed. We own that, our plan is old, they're expecting a revised one. And from that gives you the basis from which you can do some of these projects. The only way you can add to that is if you have an emergency. If you have an emergency situation, they'll entertain that. Item I already based there.
No, you're actually, you're jumping ahead to the next item on me. You're jumping ahead to the next line item on me, but go ahead, that's.
Sorry, I'm all set.
No, 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 no.
Well, I have a question. When did you propose that we have that meeting to approve the capital?
You already approved it.
No, no, you said the new one that's going into Rye. I thought you said we had to meet again.
You or the school committee already approved it, but I, but I believe, and I have to check with Rye, I think it should be approved by the town council also.
Oh, not by us again, okay.
Right, it doesn't have, the only thing that's amended to that was, is what I brought forward, we brought forward to you about the chairlifts from the locker rooms. I think we're gonna put them in there, but we have to do some investigation about how to accomplish them more cheaply. So we'll probably push them out, we had three or four, so we have a chance to investigate. So you had already approved, we brought forward the chairlifts from the locker room that were locked out and tagged out by the state. So we don't have a solution to that yet, so we have to look at a solution other than sixty thousand dollars a block. That's what we're gonna try and look at. So I'm just pushing for you all to put that on the agenda to the town council at some point. I will check with Rye, but I do think that has to be approved by them, too.
That capital plan is one hundred percent the basis of the expenditures in this plan, just so you know. It's directly from the capital plan.
In light of the conversation we had with Joe DeSilva at that meeting a couple, last week or the week before?
Last week, yeah.
It seemed to me that a lot of the rules were not what I had thought they were, and they seem to be shifting again. Do you still think it makes sense to meet with the council on the tent? Or should we be meeting? Because I think Joe alluded to a meeting to go over procedures more in detail and stuff. Or do you think we just go to the council now and find out later what the whole schematic is?
I didn't think Joe was suggesting another meeting, you are, I didn't.
He alluded to it, he thought we could meet again if we wanted to. I don't know if we, I don't want to jump ahead, though, if we're, I don't want to, I don't want to cut you off either, but.
If this is.
Some of the ties, right? So some of the stage-two update ties in. So it may be that we can hit both, are we?
Well, Jason, I finished with your presentation, did you have more you wanted to share?
Well, the last piece of this is after you take away what the school could fund and what the town's gonna fund and what the state's gonna reimburse you, whatever that total project costs less those resources is, is gonna be what the bond issuance could be. That's the gist of this, because there is no way, looking at what needs to be done, that it's gonna be done without bond issuance. It's just impossible to do ten million in health and safety or five million health and safety without some of the bond issuance.
I think that's really the key. I think the capital reserve fund can't manage all this. It manages some stuff, but not all of it. Any kind of multi-pronged approach.
Everybody to get to the table. So if that, I mean, if that's, if you understand the concept, then I did what I wanted to do today. Now, if you don't agree with it and you want to tweak it, that's the beauty of it. It's entirely there for people to make what it needs to be to get it done.
And we'll be discussing this again at the joint meeting on the tent.
Yeah, yeah, I believe I'm meeting with the council before then. So it should be pretty much there at the same page you are before this gets discussed between the bodies.
So I imagine we'll find out if they're for it or against it.
Before then, I hope to know.
Make sure you give them a copy before me.
Well, yeah.
Does anyone have any other questions for Lisa? Jason, thank you so much for putting this together for us, we really appreciate it.
No problem, thank you all.
Thank you.
Art, this is gonna be, well, I don't know, it's gonna be short and sweet.
We like short.
We like concise, concise, concise.
Concise, it will be concise. I like that better. So Jason, some of this, some of this will go directly to what you already said. So to give everyone an update, I apologize, I was hoping to have notes to hand out. I will send out meeting notes from our February twenty-second meeting with Rye.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jason.
Are you all set?
I think we're all set.
We're all set.
We're on the item, the latter, which is an update.
Yeah, I just want to, I'll be concise. What am I gonna be, concise? I'm gonna be concise.
Concise, I'm sorry.
So we met on the twenty-second of February with Rye, and it was Mr. DeSilva and Mario Corino, is that right? So I'll share my observations from that meeting, and I'll put this into some kind of meeting notes because it was a public meeting, I just haven't had a chance to draft the notes yet. Their initial feedback on stage-two fast track is that we do not have the schematic design up to snuff for the labs or the locker rooms. I do plan on clarifying this in writing, hopefully with Mr. DeSilva at some point. They told us at the twenty-second meeting that you have to have one hundred percent schematic design for the build. That does not jive with what we've heard from them in the past, and I, and I don't know why. So as of right now, fast track for the bond is on hold. It could proceed in the fall for next year's approval, for spring two thousand seventeen approval, but we will not be proceeding with fast track as of right now. Personally, publicly, I'm okay with that because the town council has, as you know, raised issues with splitting up that bond. There's, there's not a lot of appetite for it. So this gives us a little more time to sit back, not to sit back, but regroup and reach out for that educational study. They also told us that an educational study was required at stage-two as well, and I think that's a little bit early, but I'll be requesting clarification of all that. So we do have to go back out for the educational study. I requested, and thank you, I know you were out last week, but.
It's offset.
It actually went, the RFP for the educational study was published Friday in the Providence Journal, and there are a number of firms, in fact, Rye offered to send it out on their list, or they'll be getting it tomorrow, and hopefully they'll send it out and we'll get a number of responses back. I will be sending it back to Nestdeck as well. I did send them our requirements once again after finding that they responded to the North Smith, the North Kingston RFP with exactly what I was asking for and they told me that they could not do. with exactly what I was asking for, and they told me that they could not do. So I have gone back to them and asked them for a revision. I haven't heard anything back in a couple of weeks. So we'll, we'll go back to the drawing board on it. So fast track is done for this year. We are moving on with it as a major project, everything all encompassing, reconfiguration and all. And the first step in that, before we go back through any more stages with RIDE, is the educational study piece. That is estimated to take three to four months. So the deadline for the RFP is the 11th of March. And then we'll, we'll figure out, the PBIC will figure out a plan from there. And as I figure things out and, and, you know, we decide on a timeline, I'll let everyone here know.
I, I think, I would suggest that the school committee take a vote to not submit the fast track. Instead, make it official or just.
Oh, actually, yeah, cause we, yeah, you know what? That's a good idea, cause we had voted against fast track and, and so maybe we wanna.
I just have a question.
Yeah, sure.
I, I understand, you know, if it's a dead end, we're, we're still a dead end. I just wanna ask, could Eric's firm, um, any chance he could put the schematic together quickly or is just not enough time to do it?
So I don't think there's enough time to do it. The second piece of that is, um, either the school would have to pay for that time, um, which we don't have a contract. The town has a contract with them. So there's a little bit of a hiccup there that we wouldn't have, we don't have a direct contract. Now, he does work for the PBIC, so I could go to the town council and get approval. Frankly, with a, with a submission date of March 15th.
Not with, it's anything to do with time?
So, so with, with the concerns that I've heard from both the town council, um, the PBIC, and members of the public about splitting that bond, I don't know that it would be worth the, the extra spend, frankly. And, and I think right now is probably best served getting clarification from RIDE as to what the regs are and what they're going to require out of us for the next stage one and stage two. Stage one and stage two for major projects is a lot more involved than for fast track. So while I appreciate all the work that the administration did, and Steve, you did, I know, but, you know, it's, it was apparently all for naught at the end. But, you know, it's a learning process. But I, like I said, I do still want clarification of the regs because what they, what we were running under and what they told us at, at the 22nd meeting, we're 180 degrees away from the justice.
Yeah, yeah, I spoke to you privately here. It was, it was a little confusing to me. I don't know if it was Mike or not. I, I feel like stage two is supposed to be problem solving and solution driven. And it doesn't make sense to invest 10, 10 or 15,000 dollars in schematic design conceptual if that's not gonna be the solution. So I was a little puzzled, too.
Yeah, we did a question at the meeting. We said, you're talking about 100% schematic design. And they said, yeah, it's build plans. And, and the way I would look at any project like that, the way the PBIC was looking at the town bond project is, you don't do build plans unless, until you're right ready to, right before you're ready to go out to bid with a contract. You just don't do that at, at that stage because it's too cost intensive. It's, you know, you're, you're spending money, you, you work up to that. You start out with 30%. And I think probably what we have on paper right now is probably what you'd consider maybe 25, 30% design.
No, I can accept that. I just wanted to make sure we didn't run off that base.
Oh, no, you know, I, I, you know, that's, I just wanna be clear for everyone that, you know, I think we were throwing a curve ball here. I don't think this was something that anyone could have foreseen here. And, you know, we'll deal with it and figure out how to move forward.
Jason, did you wanna?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna reply to that is, that's another beauty of this plan is if the school kicks what they have and the town kicks what they have, it totally sands that bond issuance. All of the health and safety can be done through the revolving fund until we have that answer. If everybody agrees to a plan.
And that's, that's another thing that I wanted to be really clear on. In, in our, in our meeting with, with RIDE, they were very clear with us that if you're not looking for reimbursement, there may be pieces that they have to approve based on the educational, you know, needs, but you can do whatever you want. So, uh, you know, you need approval from them to close a school, absolutely. You need approval to do certain other things. But if you wanna go renovate the locker rooms, you can have at it if you're not looking for reimbursement. There's nothing stopping you from doing that. Now, the best way to do it, of course, is to get that.
To go through, yeah.
Which then puts you subject to their programs, whether it's fast track or major. So I think a lot of the things in that bond are, a lot of the items in the cap, the big budget items anyway in the capital plan are addressed in the bond. There's a couple that aren't. But I think that's, you know, we'll include those in that major program. And then it, it doesn't preclude us in the meantime, though, from setting up that fund. In fact, I would suggest that for our joint meeting, um, I think we should be, as a school committee, prepared to request at the joint meeting that the town council authorize us to set up that fund. We can discuss funding of it afterward, but I think we need to, we need to get that authorization on the table so that we can then decide, how do you wanna fund it? And then we can go back and ask the town for additional money, however you, you know, however you wanna work together and do it. You can do it later. But the key piece is, without that authorization, we can't even do that.
Question. See if your understanding was the same as mine at that meeting and the same as ours. And we'll see whatever is the answer is. What was, I thought Joe referred to the earliest possible date for approval of going forward with the project now and being able, in a position to spend money was?
I thought it was June, Mike.
June of this year?
Oh, I, I mean, if you were current cycle of June of this year.
No, no, now that we're not going forward with the fast track.
A whole year.
A whole year out.
A whole year next year.
Okay, I understood the same thing. So did you also understand, that I thought I heard him say, that all the projects that are in the fund that Jason is speaking of putting in have to be in that capital budget that you submit? And also, there has to be a stage two application submitted for that that needs to be approved before we spend the money?
Yes, absolutely. And that's why I'm pushing the, the capital plan. But, but the, the efficiency of doing some stage one or stage twos for your health and safety is much easier. It's simpler, much, much simpler than what we were doing.
Yeah, and that's to, to that point, you know, we could, as we move forward, figure out what you wanna cover next year. And you could still do a fast track next year and could have nothing to do with the PBIC and the bond.
Right.
You could do that for other health and safety items. So if we set up this, this, you know, capital fund, you could do that with that money. And that's, that's one of the things to be clear on. Again, like you said, like anything that you're getting reimbursement has to go through their approval process. And that approval process right now, the next, if we don't make March 15th, which we're not going to, you're looking at stage one next November, intent in September, stage one in November, um, and then stage two in March, potential approval in June of 2017.
And that's for the revolving fund?
Yes.
That's for the revolving fund.
And how specific does it have? So every, does it just address the entire expenditures in the five-year plan or does it take it one year at a time?
It, it addresses whatever projects you wanna put forward to start.
Stage two.
Without a timeline necessarily, just as soon as the money becomes?
No, you wouldn't give them a time.
Well, you might not have the money for the whole thing.
I thought it's whatever project you submit in your stage two application out of that huge, uh, capital budget.
But do you have to complete them in a certain amount of time? You know, if you don't have, if you have a five-year capital plan that you submit, you don't, obviously you don't have the money to do the whole thing.
You know, it's a plan. It, it, you're, you're correct. It's a plan. And so you, you're correct. At some point, if you establish, so you're a capital reserve account or whatever, even though the plan says you're looking at doing this in year two or year three, if you all decide you wanna do it in year one, at least it's in the body of your plan. So there's some flexibility within the plan. RIDE's not gonna say, wait a minute, you put that in year five. The fact that it was in your plan is, is most important to them. So you, you have control over, we need to move this up to year one. So I think you.
So you have that flexibility as long as it's in the plan?
Yes.
And of course, costs change and apply to the plan.
And he spoke about that. He spoke about the fact that costs could change.
So you should agree about that?
I think, yeah, I think we do.
Well, the scary part was too, though, he said, if you submit, um, if you submit a proposal and it's for $500,000 and the project turns out to be $550,000 and you told us bye, there's not gonna be any reimbursement for a bump in the project. You have to give really accurate costs. So it's kinda hard to do that so far in advance, but we're not even gonna get approval until following June.
Was that, was that the, the urgency?
Well, no, don't confuse the two. So there's two ways to submit. There's, and I apologize, Mr. Lovell was at the meeting as well. So you had a, you had a question.
Did I understand Joe right when he said he was gonna keep stage one in effect already so he didn't have to?
I think so, but that's part of what I wanna clarify is, we didn't have.
I thought Joe had said that, we're gonna keep this going so you don't have to redundantly put in stage one. He made that statement and he was gonna keep it open, so he just wanted this stage two.
I thought so, too. But the whole, the whole, I don't know, the vibe of the meeting was odd. We, we were, we were gonna go through a walkthrough first and then we're gonna be, he came in, sat down, and, and just, we started right in. I think he just started right in on the, on the items, whi- which was fine. But I wasn't at that point prepared to take notes. And then he said, well, we left all our paperwork in the car, so, so we kinda went, okay, let's just discuss it. So that's what we did. So that's why I'm trying to pull together notes now. But I wanna be clear about two things. There's, there's two ways to get approval from RIDE, or, well, there's three. If, if you have the five-year capital plan, and this is what you were talking about, Eric. You've got your five-year capital plan. So conceivably, let's say year one is, is, um, school year 16, 17, the items that we wanna do then. Those have to be approved at the beginning of 16 to do those. So by, by year one, really what we're talking about here is 17, 18. Because you're gonna go through your fast track approval next year. You're gonna start in September, you're gonna hopefully complete in June. You get that approval, and then you start either doing them during the school year or that summer before. Or you, you have the approval and then you line them up for the next summer. So it's gotta be a two-year process, really, for the fast track items. The major items, though, if you're doing something, the major items really are the things that you're gonna talk about funding with the bond. You're not gonna be able to fund them out of a capital reserve account, I don't think, for the most part. You're really gonna be looking for bond funding, and that's a much longer timeline.
Yeah, I'm glad you made that point. Jason, not every, not everything can be funded out of the cap, not all health and safety, I think, could be funded out of the capital reserve account. I think it's, it's pretty big.
It's, it's only stuff that's.
Yeah. So I'm gonna just throw one other thing to keep, because I feel like you have your projects over here, your plan over here, and you have your funding sources here. So the more you discuss, the more it becomes clear to you. There's only one other thing that I do believe General Assembly might re-up on the school buildings authority, you know, how they re-up the 20 million for shovel-ready projects, et cetera. I, I wanna study up on that more because if, if they're gonna open up that again, it might be who wants to be ready for some projects? But I gotta go back and look.
But I thought shovel-ready, that's the clarification that we need. Cause shovel-ready, I thought meant that you had to have approval at that point. That's, to me, that was shovel-ready. It's not just that we, we know what we're doing.
Let me go back a little.
I think you have to have approval.
The, the turnaround was much quicker in the informed scene.
It was.
Yeah, so. Let's just put that over here.
The other, the other way that you can fund for the schools for any capital improvement is through emergency approval. So emergency approval is basically, um, you've identified it in your capital plan. It's anything under 500, up to $500,000. And then you bring that forth to RIDE and you say, you, you bring it forth with a superintendent's recommendation and an engineer confirming that it's an emergency, some kind of emergency appear. And you can do up to $500,000 that way. They seem to me to be very open to that. I don't know what we would consider as a town, an emergency. That's, that's a, a threshold question that I think we as a school committee need to figure out at some point and, and decide whether we have anything that we would ask an engineer to certify as an emergency. I don't know that we do or not. I, I think that's a, that's a bigger discussion.
He sounded like that was a big hurdle to jump over.
Was.
Like it had to be a real emergency, like the hot water tanks in all the buildings just blow up and.
Yeah, he used, yeah, he used very, very easily identified emergency situations, but.
It would be good, at least to have a committee vote tonight to either withdraw the, the stage two fast track. I think we said that, we had mentioned to Joe he was gonna do it, but I said, it probably good if, he got a letter from the district.
I, you know, I heard that conversation and I agreed when he said that at the time. But then in retrospect, after I was thinking about how that whole meeting played out, I thought, you know, I kinda would rather have the letter come from him. Because there were so many things that he threw out there that caught me off guard, that I sounded like new regs or something. That I, I'd almost like, rather than us saying something to him, I really would like him to direct us or.
So I don't know, I, I guess if you wanna do that, Mike, then go ahead, let's just go ahead and submit the application. Let him, let him do his homework and tell us where it was deficient. Cause I don't know that you'll get an email back saying as a result of that meeting. He's probably gonna throw it back on us.
Well, didn't he offer it first to write the letter and then?
He did, yeah.
He did, and I said, you know, it's, I just felt it was more appropriate for the committee to decide, cause you all voted to submit it. And so if it's not gonna be submitted, I felt like it should be a school committee vote.
I think the point was maybe, I'm sorry, would it be worth submitting just to get a feedback?
I, I guess that's where I'm, I, I'm, I'm a little bit on the fence on this is.
Nothing mentioned, nothing.
I thought, I thought we were trying to work with him, but I was taken aback by the whole 100% schematic design thrown at us last minute. You know, I, I was, I was a little more frustrated that I took a vacation day for, frankly, as well, just to be, so, you know.
Yeah, even if I could, it's a letter response. Yeah, yeah, that's exactly.
I mean, I, I, if it, if it's a dead issue, it's a dead issue. But, um, we submit at least two a year. I mean, we flow, probably, we've probably folded two bonds this year or last year through RIDE and get all the approvals and everything. I can put you in touch with, with the key person in the city of Providence. Maybe there's an angle to, to help us with this. You know, we do so many of them. I mean, and I think out of that $20 million, the city of Providence obtained 10. So.
It's pretty good.
Yeah, I know, I know I folded a bond for 10 this year on a, on a very quick turnaround, so.
I mean, I'm gonna tell it, so we already voted to prove it. Submit it. It doesn't seem like, it doesn't sound to downside to it.
I thought it was.
There is a, the, the downside is it puts it back on them that, that they need to respond to.
But that's what we want, anyway, right?
I don't know that that's a downside.
The only downside, Bill, and I think it's a big downside, is the stage, the application for the major projects has to be worked on. So are we gonna have the superintendent focus on, you know, pushing this dead-in-the-water application through that Joe DeSilva said, don't even submit, and work on the major projects, the stage one is, is it stage one? Stage one submission application? I would rather he put his energy into something that we've already been told by Joe, who recommended we fold everything into the major projects application. Then, you know, everybody has legitimate work. We don't need to create new work for them that maybe will be beneficial. I'd rather focus on what we need. And what we need is the stage one application for the major projects, as he said.
So do you have to do any of the work on the stage two? I'm glad you brought it up. Like, you know, Jason brought up the fact, you know, he worked at home for four hours. I can't, I can't write another stage one or stage two. I, I, I don't mean to be disrespectful. This really has kicked the bejesus out of me this year. You know, writing stage one and stage two in the past and then writing what I wrote this year. I, I know that some of you think it's, it's copy and paste. It is not. It is not a copy and paste, folks. There's a lot of work that goes into it. So I, I agree with you, but on the flip side, Mike, if, if, when the time comes and, and the school committee agrees to move forward with a stage one major project, you need a project manager. You really need a project manager that's gonna shepherd this whole thing. I think, you know, I put my best foot forward on your stage one fast track. It got approved. Stage one letter of intent, major projects, it got approved. Not in waiting for a stage one major project. We're not gonna meet.
Well, there's no deadline.
I take that back. There's no deadline back.
Yeah.
But, but I mean, honestly, I, I don't, if, if you all want me to do it, wait till July. I, I can't, I can't, I just, I have way too much.
I, I don't even care if we wait on this, but I don't think there's any, I don't wanna see people waste energy on something that clearly the guy who's in charge of it said, don't submit it, fold it into the major projects. And as I've said earlier, nobody wants to split the bond up anyway. So what would be the point of putting all energy into that?
Here's, here's the thing is, we can, we can submit it and, and request, and I don't know, I don't think that's, is that any additional work for you just to submit it?
It's not gonna be. I just package it in a notebook and send it in.
What about the follow-up as he asks for this and that?
Well, no, but that's the thing. No, that gives you, that gives you maybe some direction to go. And you could just let us know what's asked for before you do any, I wouldn't suggest doing any work on it. The other thing is, we can document the meeting we had and document the fact that we were told we've, we've, we had four representatives. We had a representative from the town council there, the school committee, the administration, who all heard the same thing. You know, there's no point in you going forward with your stage two. I would say, let's put that in the meeting minutes. Let's, you know, have, you know, however, however you wanna do it, we, we file those meeting minutes and that documents where that came from. I think it needs to be transparent. I think people need to know why we stopped.
Yeah.
And we stopped it based on advice from RIDE at that meeting that we don't have 100% design schematic.
I'd support the letter, even coming from us versus asking for Joe from it. I'd support that versus submit an application that we know is going nowhere and is gonna be busy work for people. I don't see a benefit to that, really.
Yeah, and I don't know whether you anger RIDE at all by submitting it.
Yeah, after you.
You're not gonna, yeah.
So did we clear of not submitting it?
I don't think we should. Personally, I don't think there's any point to.
Do we wanna take a vote?
Sure. Somebody wanna make a motion?
We'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, that we request that, um, that the chair send a letter from the school committee withdrawing stage two. And I want to be specific. I want it that way.
Well, have we even submitted it?
Well, we're not submitting stage two.
No, you, you just went all the right, we just sent a letter on your behalf. It's not a.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, because we haven't submitted it.
We haven't submitted.
No, we haven't. But he's expecting it.
Okay.
Except he kind of drafted.
So you're, so authorized, the superintendent?
Just, just make a motion.
Motion, motion for Superintendent Lindberg to notify RIDE that you're not be submitting stage two.
Based on their recommendations, or based on?
Uh, yeah, based on their recommendations.
I want that, I would.
I think that's fair.
I think that's perfect, Jim.
I think that's fair, yeah. No, I like that, Jim. Thank you. I'll second the motion.
Mike, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so moved? Any other questions?
Fall into a drink. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.